Evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, April 27th. It is 6:33 PM, and this is the Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. Councillors present, Grantowski, Bordelawn, Bumgardner, Franco, Heed, Melendez, Parker, and Zepary. Councillor Obree has not joined us yet, so we are at eight councillors and we have a forum. Calendar Communications, Councillor Bumgardner.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Councillor Parker.
I just attended the meeting for Thames Valley Council for Communication Action TV CCA meeting. I will type up all the reports for all councillors to review. Literally just got out of it, so I didn't have a chance to send that to everyone. And that's all I have to report, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Franco.
Thank you. I had received a phone call from Mr. Rustler and discussed the the project and some newer business that has arisen over the past week or so. And I just got back from a baseball game where Fitch just won 5-2, and my son pitched with nine strikeouts. So it was very exciting. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Bert, I think Councillor Obree is having trouble getting into the meeting. I'm wondering if you could please send her the
I just emailed it to her and I'm in the middle of texting it to her.
Thank you so much. Councillor Heed, Communications?
Well, congratulations to Councillor Franco's son, first of all. I have nothing to report for official town business, but I was able to contribute to the the, what's called the senior graduation prom party, because I did get flushed, which was very exciting. And the only other news that I have is personal. I got my job back at the Mystic Marriott, so 14 so times, times are gonna get better.
Very good, congratulations. Councillor Bordelawn.
Thank you. I too received a email from Rustler asking to speak and then an attempted a phone call, which I have yet to be able to connect with. So, but I have been reached out to twice. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. Congratulations Conrad on your return to work.
Councillor Melendez?
Nothing to report.
Councillors of Perry.
I also had a, an enlightening conversation with Mr. Rustler on the phone for a half hour earlier this week. And the other reporter, as long as we're getting personal, Councillor Obree has sold my house. So we are in better times.
Very good, thank you. As well, I had a conversation with Mr. Rustler and spoke very frankly about the situation and encouraged better communication with the public. I attended the Groton Sale Foundation meeting for the month of April. They are moving right along with the process with EB and the people who will be volunteering the work to get the sale ready for placement. In addition, Mr. Frost, who is doing some of the design work for the site, presented some very preliminary drawings to let us all have a sense of what was going on. And in addition, they are beginning to work on the fundraising aspect of this, so stay tuned for that. And I think that's everything. And Mr. Bert, do you have any communications you'd like to share?
Nothing other than I was excited to see we finally dropped out of the red category for COVID. Councillor Obree is trying to call me, but she's still having issues. I'm gonna take that if that's okay.
Thank you very much. All right, so we are on to approval of minutes, 2021/313, April 13th, 2021 minutes. This is on, begins on page two of the packet. Councillor Bumgardner, please, would you move acceptance of minutes?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes of April 13th, 2021, so moved.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Bumgardner and seconded by Franco for approval of the minutes of April 13th. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, we will vote all in favor of approval of 2021/313, April 13th, 2021 minutes. Please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously, and we are still at eight councillors at this point. Thank you. We just wanna pause for a minute here. We have with us Finance Director Landry this evening. We will be beginning new business. I'm just trying to give Councillor Obree a chance to join us before we begin the budget. Let me see, I see an attendee. All right, we are on to new business, 5A, 2021/2052, approving FYE 2022 budget. This starts on page 10 in your book. And we are recommending resolutions this evening in the COW. And then when we recess and we go into council is when we actually read the resolution that Director Landry prepared. Councillor, let's see, where are we starting?
I make a motion, yes, I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the FYE 2020 budget, 2022 budget. I so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. For 2021/205, approving FYE 2022 budget. Okay. We're gonna, we're just gonna go head on with this then. Yes, one moment, Councillor Franco, I wanted to Mr. Bert wanted to add anything, or Director Landry, before we started, but I was, I was looking for Councillor Obree, because I know she's having trouble getting in.
Yeah, she's continuing to have trouble.
Okay. Did you wanna say anything before we start, Mr. Bert?
I don't have anything, other than, you know, good job and everyone reviewing everything.
There's, okay, hold on, she might be here. She is here.
She's here, yep.
Great. Okay. Good evening, Councillor Obree. Okay, it is 6:41, and we are at nine councillors. Councillor Obree has arrived. Councillor Obree, we have just started new business.
Thank you.
We have item 5A, 2021/2052, approving FYE 2022 budget. Has been moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. And you haven't missed anything yet. Director Landry, did you wish to say anything before we do any discussion?
I'll just give a brief overview of where we are. Excuse me. The Town Council has completed the review of the Town Manager's Budget. And at this point, we set tentative tax rates before you, and you also adopt all of the budgets, and you will pass it on to the RTM. And once the RTM completes their budget review, we will come back to the council and just set the final mill rates, which is usually done the first week of June. I did, you have plenty, not plenty, I'm sorry, you have several backups that gives you reconciliations of getting you from the Town Manager's Propose to, that shows the cuts made both the General Fund and also the Capital Improvement Fund. If anyone has any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Franco, had her hand up. Councillor Franco, you have the floor.
Can you explain why we don't read the numbers in the COW before it goes to the Town Council?
Are you asking me?
Whoever can answer.
I think in the, in the resolutions are only, this is just what I believe, and John can, the Town Manager can dump in at any time. The resolutions are not, are usually not read, except at the full council meeting. They're not adopted by the COW. They're just, the COW makes the motion, recommends a motion for a resolution, but doesn't actually adopt the resolution.
And we did look at years past, the mayor did, and I looked at it to make sure that's how it's been done in the past.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. We will vote on recommending a resolution approving the FYE 2022 budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine councillors. We are on to 2021/309, computation of tax rate for General Fund. This is Councillor Heed, I believe. I'm sorry, I thought I got you. That's right, you were talking. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay. Make a motion to recommend a resolution computing a tentative tax rate for General Fund FYE 2022. I so move.
Second, Parker. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker for 2021/309, computation of tax rate for General Fund. And again, again, same thing that we were just discussing with the last item. Councillor Obree? You have the floor?
Yes, I was just wondering if we're gonna put a number on this one. Trying to find my place. Yeah. We got the budget, we didn't get a number for that, but this is I'm sorry, which one are we approving right now?
We are on 2021/309, computation of tax rate for General Fund. And what we're doing in COW, as Director Landry explained, and Mr. Bert explained, is we are simply recommending resolutions to go to the council meeting, which we will have as soon as, what we're gonna have, the council meeting tonight. We're gonna recess COW, have a council meeting tonight. And that council meeting is when we will read the resolutions that the Finance Director has prepared for us.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Do you have other comments or questions?
I yield the floor.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All right, so we will vote on 2021/309, computation of tax rate for General Fund. All those in favor of recommending the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine councillors. This is Councillor Heed. 2021/310, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove, please.
Make a motion for the computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove fiscal year ending 2022, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Heed and seconded by Zepary. For 2021/310. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2021/310, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove, recommending resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. Run to Councillor Obree for 2021/311, computation of tax rate for Groton Sewer District.
Motion to recommend a resolution computing the tax rate for the Groton Sewer District FYE 2022. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Obree and seconded by Zepary. For 2021/311. Facing no discussion, we will vote on 2021/311, computation of tax rate for Groton Sewer District. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, thank you. And we are on to 2021/312, setting RTM annual meeting date on FYE 2022 town budget. And I believe we are on Councillor Bordelawn.
Thank you. Make a resolution setting the RTM annual meeting date on the FYE 2020 town budget. Whereas section 9.3.1 of the Town of Groton
Bordelawn?
Yep.
We need you to read the resolution that's in the COW packet on page 4. That's okay. There's a lot of papers tonight.
To be honest with you, some of these that I weren't able to print down, my packet was mailed to me, so I'm reading from a screen and packets tonight, so if you wanna skip over me, that's fine.
I don't mind waiting if you'd like us to.
No, you can move on.
Councillor Melendez?
Yes. Thank you. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving that the annual budget meeting of the representative town meeting be held on Thursday, April 29th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. I so move.
Second.
Franco.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Franco for 2021/312. Any discussion on setting the meeting date? Seeing none, we will vote on 2021/312, setting RTM annual meeting date on FYE 2022 town budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, thank you. Okay. At this point, we will recess the Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. It is 6:49. Okay, so we are in recess for the Town Council Committee of the Whole, and we are gonna be going to the Town Council Special Meeting Agenda now. Okay, so recess the Committee of the Whole.
Madam Mayor, I am here, the Town Clerk. You can't see me, but I'm here.
I see you, where are you?
Mr. Town Manager, would you like to do the same thing for me? I have no picture, and I know that is in my face.
It's a different issue. I don't have control over what's happening with you. She was under attendees and got promoted. You're the same status as her now. Sometimes they get weird that way. Cindy had it happening last night.
Well.
Madam Clerk, are you going to take over calling the Town Council meeting?
Yes, I am. You call it to order.
I'd like to call to order the April 27th Town Council Special Meeting. It is 6:51.
Okay. Madam, Madam Mayor, all of your councillors are present, that's nine members. I can see every face. Would you like me to read their names?
That would be great, thank you.
We have councillor, oops, don't disappear on me, councillor Bordelawn, Bumgardner, Franco, Zepary, Parker, Obree, Grantowski, I think that's everybody, and Melendez.
Thank you. So we are on to new business, and we left off with Councillor Melendez, so we are on to Councillors of Perry. And I just wanted to refresh everybody's memory, so right now you have a meeting packet, right, with the agenda, the sequence, and then you have this item that came from Director Landry. And this is where you'll find the resolutions that we'll be reading tonight at this portion of our gathering, okay? So I don't know if Director Landry wanted to preface any, any motions with comments, or are you ready for us to start?
No, I'm ready for you to start. The resolutions are very wordy and have a lot of numbers in them, if you recall from prior years.
Right, great, thank you so much. So, Councillors of Perry, you're first. If you would like to move, 2021/205-3, this is on page two. It is inside the packet. It is resolution approving budgets for the fiscal year.
Commencing July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. Resolve that the budgets for the various funds here and set forth are hereby approved and adopted, and the amounts on the total appropriation line are hereby appropriated for the functions specified. And the amounts listed under the heading Financing Plan are hereby established as approved budget estimates for the type of revenues specified and include all estimated fiscal year ending 2022 cash reserves except fiscal year ending 2022 current property taxes, which will be estimated for budget purposes by separate resolution when the fiscal year ending 2022 tax rate is set. And further, that a complete detailed document indicating all function appropriations is hereby made a part of this record and shall be submitted to the Town Clerk for public record for budgets as follows. General Fund, Golf Course Fund, Sewer Operating Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Mumford Cove Special Taxing District, Revaluation Fund, Recreation and Senior Activities Fund, Borrow, Borrow TC, no Borrow TCT, Sewer District Fund, Capital Reserve Fund, Fleet Fund, Technology Replacement Fund, and Human Services Assistance Fund. I so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Zepary and seconded by Franco. It's Bor, I don't know if it makes a difference, it's Bor, it, Connecticut. We're set, though, everything else is in order. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on 2021/2053, approving FYE 2022 budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine councillors, thank you. Next on the list is 2021/3091, computation of tax rate for General Fund. This was on page three of the packet, and it is right below what Councillors of Perry just read, I believe, or on Councillor Bumgardner.
Resolution computing a tentative tax rate for FYE 2022 to pay appropriations approved in the General Fund budget as adopted by the Town Council. Whereas the Town Council adopted on April 27th, 2021, a general fund budget providing for expenditures, appropriations, or expenses totaling $137,736,367. Nated cash revenues exclusive of FYE 2022 current property taxes totaling $39,064,173. Be it resolved that a tax rate of 25.99 mils is hereby determined as required by Chapter 9 of the Groton Town Charter based on the following computations. Total General Fund Appropriations per Budget approved by Council, $137,000, $137,736,367. Less General Fund Cash Receipts exclusive of FYE 2022 current property taxes, $39,064,173. Less the amount to be appropriated from the unassigned fund balance, $2,851,000. Amount to be raised from property taxes, $95,821,194. Amount computed as follows, $95,821,194 divided by the net assessed valuation after the Board of Assessment adjustments of divided by 98.6 collection rate multiplied by 1,000 equals 95.99 mil rate. So moved.
Correction.
Not that mil rate, please? Can you approve the mil rate, Councillor Bumgardner? Just read the mil rate again, please.
At the end.
By 1,000 equals, say it again, please. You're muted.
20, 29 point, 25.99 mil rate?
That's it.
I so move. Second.
Moved by Bumgardner and seconded by Franco, and everybody just almost had a heart attack. Okay. Anything anybody wants to discuss? Okay, we will vote on 2021/309, computation of tax rate for General Fund. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously? We're on to 2021/310, one, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove. Councillor Parker?
So, excuse me, sorry. Resolution computing a tentative tax rate for FYE 2022 to pay expenses appropriations approved in the Mumford Cove Special Taxing District Fund budget as adopted by the Town Council, whereas the Town Council adopted on April 27th, 2021, a Mumford Cove District Fund budget providing for expenditures, appropriations, or expenses totaling $21,180 and estimate cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2022 current property taxes totaling $0. Resolve that a tax rate of 0.33 mils is hereby determined as required by Chapter 9 of the Groton Town Charter, and based on the following computations. Total Mumford Cove District Fund Appropriations per Budget approved by Council is $21,180. Less estimated amount to be appropriated from unassigned fund balance is $0. Less cash receipts exclusive of current property taxes is $0. Amount to be raised from property taxes is $21,180. Amount computed as follows. $21,180 divided by net assessed valuation of $63,601,987 after Board of Assessment adjustments divided by 99.5% collection rate multiplied by 1,000 equals 0.33 mils. I so move.
Second, Franco.
By Parker and seconded by Franco for 2021/310, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove. Okay, seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2021/310, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine councillors. We are on to 2021/311, one, computation of tax rate for Groton Sewer District. And I believe this is Councillor Franco.
Yes, make a resolution computing a tentative tax rate for FYE 2022 to pay expenses appropriations approved for the Groton Sewer District Fund budget as adopted by the Town Council. Whereas the Town Council adopted on April 27th, 2021, a Groton Sewer District Fund budget providing for expenditures, appropriations, and expenses totaling $1,396,418 and estimated cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2022 current property taxes totaling $6,200. Be it resolved that the tax rate of 0.53 mils is hereby determined as required by Chapter 9 of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total Groton Sewer District Fund Appropriations per Budget approved by Council, $1,396,418. Less estimated amount to be appropriated from unassigned fund balance, $125,000. Less cash, cash receipts exclusive of current property taxes, $6,200. Amount to be raised from property taxes, $1,265,218. Amount compute, computed as follows. $1,265,218 divided by net assessed valuation of $2,418,353,161 after Board of Assessment adjustments and excludes motor vehicles divided by then 99.4% collection rate multiplied by 1,000 equals 0.53 mils. I so move.
Could you, could you read the valuation one more time, please? I don't know if I misheard or not.
You said
I, I heard the same thing.
Could you read the valuation? You don't have to read the whole thing again, please.
What's, which ones?
Where it says the net assessed valuation of $2 billion?
Net assessed valuation of $2 billion. Assessed valuation of 2 billion 418,453,161 dollars.
Thank you. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Okay, seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2021 311 computation of tax rate for Groton Sewer District. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. And that brings us to 2021 312. And this is Counselor. He, I believe.
Right, I'll make a motion to pass resolution setting RTM annual meeting date on the fiscal year ending 2022 town budget. Where section 9.3.1 of the Groton Town Charter requires the town council. Determine the date for the annual budget meeting of the representative town meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the annual budget meeting of the representative town meeting will be held on Thursday, April 29, 2021 at seven o'clock P M during a virtual meeting shown on G M T V and YouTube video. I so move.
Second Franco.
Moved by heed and seconded by Franco. Too many papers. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2021 312 setting the RTM annual meeting date, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the special town council meeting.
So move.
Moved by Aubrey. Is there a second?
Second Franco.
Seconded by Frank. All those in favor of adjourning the special town council meeting, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 7:05 P M. Thank you. All right, so we are going to at this point reconvene. The town council committee of the whole meeting. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate it.
All set. We'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Night.
Night. We are back at 7:05. And we are on item five F. This is 2021 295 F Y E 2021 fourth quarter transfers. And I believe we are on Counselor Aubrey.
Don't be on Counselor Aubrey because I haven't found my place.
Okay, we're on page 15. Could Counselor Bordelon or Melendez take this one, please?
In the packet that we had, page 15?
Yes, the town council committee of the whole packet.
I have it in front of me.
Okay, Counselor Melendez. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to recommend.
We lost you. I'm sorry. Counselor Melendez.
Melendez, some mute.
Could you repeat that, Counselor Melendez? You faded out.
I can read it if you want.
Thank you, Counselor Bordelon.
Page 15, correct.
Yes.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution for the approved fourth quarter transfer for F Y E 2021. I so move.
Thank you.
Seconds.
Moved by Bordelon and seconded by Zepari. Thank you. And Finance Director Landry is with us to tell us all about fourth quarter transfers.
Well, if you recall, I had recently came to the council or to the cow, uh, sent fourth quarter transfers. And then after we had that meeting, I discovered that what, there was an additional fourth quarter transfer that was necessary. And this one is 130,000 dollars that would be transferred from contingency to contributions to other funds. Which will ultimately be going through the reval fund. The legal fees for a couple of court cases have far exceeded what we had estimated in this year's budget. So in order that this fund does not end up in a deficit fund balance, we need an additional transfer from the general fund for fiscal 21.
Thank you, Director Landry. Does anyone have questions for? I'm sorry.
No, I said you're welcome.
Oh, okay. Does anyone have questions for Director Landry on this fourth quarter transfer? Counselor Bordelon.
Thank you. I'm sure most of it probably has to be asked in executive session, but it is, is it just fees for. The length in time in which some of these court things are going on that's driving the cost or what's?
Yes, that's really, it's just the length of time that the cases have gone on. Uh, we have a couple that have been postponed. A couple of different times, but um, yes, it's just additional fees. They take a long time sometimes to work their way through the system.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Aubrey, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted, these are funds for items that we have for the reevaluation.
Yes, this is a transfer would ultimately go into the revaluation fund. That's correct. Legal fees, I'm sorry.
And then out of the reavila- reevaluation fund, you, you pay the legal fees?
Yes, that are associated with lawsuits related to revaluation.
Okay. How far are we into something like this?
I'm, I'm, don't understand.
Is this a particular thing that we have a problem with or? Yeah, I just wanted to know a little bit more about what's causing the ongoing legal fees.
We do have a couple of cases that have been going on for some time now that we're trying to resolve that. We've been unable to resolve them other than going to court. But those have accumulated some additional legal fees. We had intis- we had hoped that these cases would be settled last fall, but that did not occur.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any first time hands before we go to second time speakers? Counselor Bordelon, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. I was wondering, John, if you could just at some point make it an, an item to update us on any of these. That are extending and maybe a little bit more detail, probably can't talk about them here, but. Um, I know some updates have come out, but maybe we can talk about the particulars of this at some point. Thank you. Is that a possibility?
Uh, yeah, I'll talk to Cindy about it.
Just to, I mean, because I think it would be important to, I mean, we're talking about the transfer, but it would be nice to have a discussion regarding what's really involved in this prior to. So, thank you.
Hey, seeing no other hands, we will vote on 2021 295 F Y E 2021 fourth quarter transfers. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine counselors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Landry. We are on to item five G. This is 2021 306 Long Island Sound Futures Fund Grant. And this is page 17. Counselor Melendez, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to recommend a resolution to endorse the submittal of the grant application to the L I S.
I'm not hearing. Can you, can the rest of you hear?
Sustainability assessment in downtown is such program.
No, he's, he's clicking on, uh, in and off of, uh, mute.
Counselor Melendez, um, we're not, we're not able to hear you. I'm sorry. Would you like to try one more time? And if not, we'll go on to somebody else.
I might have a bad connection, but I make a motion to recommend a resolu-
He helped me out before. I'll do his if you.
We can't, we can't hear you, Counselor Melendez. So Counselor Aubrey has offered to read your resolution for you. So Counselor Aubrey, thank you.
To recommend the resolution to endorse.
The submittal of the grant application to the L I S.
Okay, um, Counselor Aubrey, go ahead.
Okay, grant application to the L I S F F for the real, oh, I shouldn't have taken this one. Somebody want to help me with that? Resiliency and sustainability assessment in downtown Mystic and authorizes the town managers sign all required grant documents for such program. I so move.
Second Franco.
Moved by Aubrey and seconded by Franco. Thank you very much. And I see we have Mr. Reiner with us to provide us with a brief background on this.
Good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So, uh, this grant application, I'm sure I'm speaking correctly into the microphone. Is through the Long Island Sound Futures Fund. We had applied for this grant, I think it was last year or the year before. We're not successful. We've worked with the staff at the state to try to refine our proposal a little bit. And here we are looking to do a sustainability and resiliency plan focused on downtown Mystic. It was something that. The state really liked how that area is an economic driver for the area and it wouldn't just be looking at sustainability and resiliency along. Say, you know, your normal beach type shoreline, but something that would also have some economic implications to it. It's a, we're looking approximately a $90,000 grant and a 50% match of that would be through in kind services. Uh, and potentially some other grants that we would go for. The grant application is due at the end of May, so that's why we're taking this through now. We've started working on the grant a little bit, but haven't truly 100% flushed it out.
Thank you very much. Do counselors have questions on the grant application? Counselor Heed?
Just a point of clarification. You're only applying for the grant right now. These items listed in here are just possible uses for the grant. Is that correct?
Uh, so when we apply for the grant, we would be looking to focus it on downtown Mystic regarding resiliency and sustainability.
Correct.
Counselor Aubrey, are you wishing to have the floor?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I'm just, does that mean that it has to go in downtown Mystic?
For this particular grant, that's what we're focusing on.
Do you have something particular in mind?
Well, uh, looking at as our climate changes and sea level rises in downtown Mystic. There's a lot of areas that are already being inundated by King High Tides, uh, some of our storm high tides. And as sea level rise continues, more of our roadways and eventually businesses are going to be impacted. So we want to look at some strategies. Around what we can do through that process.
Is, is this really like a study?
Uh, this will be, there will be a, a study assessment. The. Take we want to do on this is actually to get a lot of public input and really make this a very public process and come out of it with really implementation. Action items and not just, uh, come up with a, a, a total. Study, but actually come out of it with some things that we can change and some recommendations to move forward.
Is, is this been recommended by the committee that we have that's working on this now?
Uh, as far as resiliency and sustainability, they have, um. Certainly been interested in. Climate change and resiliency in the Mystic area. We did not run this grant application by them.
Well, I would just suggest, um, that since they have put so much time and into it, they probably should at least have, uh. An acknowledgement of what your plans are and, and maybe they could add to what you're going to be doing in the future. Uh, I appreciate what you're doing. I have no problem with it. I do have a little problem with it being designated for one particular area when we have a lot of area that has to be addressed. And, uh, so. But I appreciate the fact that you're doing it and trying to get it moving.
So one of the reasons, oh, thank you. One of the reasons we were specific to downtown Mystic is the feedback that we got from the state was they were. Looking for us to not just necessarily do another sustainability and resiliency plan. Uh, on a townwide basis. So, uh, the last go around for this grant application, the city of Groton had. Submitted a grant to do a sustainability and resiliency plan for the city of Groton. And we wanted to do something a little bit different that would be more attractive to the grant funders. So that's why we're trying to make it a little bit more specific for that area. If, if we could get additional funding, there are some other areas in town that we also wanted to focus on, such as the aquatic bridge area and river road. But if we wanted to take that level of specificity that we're looking for in this, we'd probably be looking somewhere around $150,000 project. And I, I don't want to push our luck too much on how much money we ask from the state.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no other hands, so we will vote on 2021 306 Long Island Sound Futures Fund Grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine counselors. Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 2021 1033. Pleasant Valley School Property Sale. Update on excess property redevelopment and potential executive section. We don't have a motion at this time. However, I'm going to turn this over to, um, Mr. Reiner to give us a little bit of background on this item, please, Mr. Reiner.
Sure. So, um, thank you again, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. There's. Kind of two, uh, pieces of this that I want to focus on tonight, one of them being. The process that we take on the disposition of property and then kind of an update also on our R F P process. And as we, uh, get into the update on the R F P process and the submittals, we will then talk, uh, a little bit more specifically about where we are. Negotiations and in order to do that, we'll want to go into executive session. So. Just to kind of give a little bit of, uh, background again on where we are with this property. So the Pleasant Valley School. We had, uh, ha- held a public hearing on the disposition of this property back earlier. This month on April 6th. And. All properties that we're looking to dispose of, we have to, uh, have a public hearing due to, uh, general Connecticut statute, section 7 dash 163 E. We also have to do an appraisal of each of these properties, which we have done an appraisal, which has been posted on the town of Groton website. This property has been, uh, referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission and on February 25th, 2020. The commission found that the sale of the property is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. And according to section 9.6 of the Town of Groton Charter. The sale of any real property valued at over $10,000 shall be recommended to the R T M and approved by a vote of the majority of those present. So that's one piece that we need to move forward. We've had that public hearing. We do want to move this on, uh, to the R T M. The town has also advertised the property for sale through an R F P process. And we've been working with a group of staff, town council members and R T M members reviewing those R F Ps or, or I should say those proposals. Uh, that have come in and, um, interviewing some of the prospective development firms. I'm happy to answer any questions about kind of where we are. Paige Bronk is also on the call with me tonight. And otherwise, as we go into the specifics of where we are in the interview process and some of those interviews, those are questions and discussions. That we should be having in executive session because we do not want to, um, show our hand, for lack of a better term, on where we are. What is it that we're looking for, uh, to sell the property and some of the other amenities that we're asking for. So well, again, all those things we really should be talking about in executive session.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, did you want to say anything before I make the motion?
No, nothing for me.
Is, is Ms. Jones with us or should, should I include her in the resolution? Will she be joining us?
She is at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I wasn't sure how quickly we'd be getting to the rest of the council meeting, so she'll be staying at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay, so, um, I will, um, eliminate her from the resolution then.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I hereby move that the members of the town council, town manager John Burt, planning director John Reiner, economic development manager Paige Bronk, town attorney. Again, and attorney Eric Callahan go into executive session pursuant to general statute, section 1206 D. For the discussion of the selection of a site or the lease, sale or purchase of real estate by the state or a political subdivision of the state. Concerning purchase and development of the former Pleasant Valley School property.
Second Heed.
Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Heed. All those in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, it is 7:23. And we are in executive session and Mr.
Again, it is eight fifty-seven and the council committee of the whole is out of executive session. And I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules at this point.
So moved.
Moved by heed. Is there a second to suspend the rules for the purposes of making another motion regarding referring an item to the RTM? Moved by heed is I will second for purposes. Moved by heed seconded by Granatowski to suspend the rules in order to make a referral to the RTM. We need two-thirds, so we need six votes to suspend the rule. So all those in favor of suspending rules, please raise your hand and keep your hand up until I call your name, please. Heid. Melendez. Aubrey. Parker. Franco. Baumgartner. Granatowski. Opposed to suspending the rules? Please raise your hand. Abstentions? I don't have everyone voting. Council Board lawn, are you voting against or abstaining? Council Board lawn, are you voting against or abstaining?
My hand went on under abstention. Thank you.
So Superior isn't here.
Oh, we've lost Councillors of Perry. Thank you for rec. I was just going to do another count. Okay, so we are at eight councillors as of eight fifty-eight. And we have one, two, three, four. We have seven councillors in favor of suspending the rules. Heid, Melendez, Aubrey, Parker, Franco, Baumgartner, Granatowski, zero opposed. And one abstention Board lawn. Okay, so I will make a motion to recommend a resolution on the sale of the former Pleasant Valley School property and refer the sale to the RTM for consideration. I saw. Moves by Granatowski and seconded by heed. The hands, are they left over from the move to suspend the rules? I wasn't watching the screen. Are these for discussion purposes? I'm going to assume they're for discussion. Now they're down. I don't know. I don't know if those were left from from earlier or not. Is there discussion on the motion?
No, not on a motion. Sorry.
Okay, so that's that's what we're doing right now, councillor Aubrey, is we're going to discuss the motion to recommend the resolution to the RTM.
Yes, thank you.
Right. Is there discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the motion to recommend the resolution on the sale of the former Pleasant Valley School property and refer the sale to the RTM for consideration. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, I can't tell when the hands are going up. Council Board lawn, are you abstaining?
That's correct.
So we had eight in favor. Zero opposed, one abstention, seven in favor, I apologize. Seven in favor. Zero opposed, one abstention. I think I read the vote wrong on the motion just for Ms. Hilton's benefit. On the motion to suspend the rules, it was seven in favor because we lost Councillors of Perry. Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. On the motion to refer to the RTM, it is seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Okay, so that is passed. So then we are on to item six, review of agenda items. I don't have the list in front of me. I don't think it was included in the pack at this time. Councillor Aubrey?
I don't think it's in the agenda, but I'd like to ask the town manager if we could make accommodation so that we could go back to meeting at the annex. I think we could probably put up some. You tell me to wait a minute or you're counting?
I'm saying that's not an agenda item, so hold that for other business, please.
Okay.
Is there any review of agenda items?
Okay.
Okay, councillor Aubrey, we're onto other business. Go ahead, please. I had to do it. I got to follow. I just follow the rules.
I'm happy you do.
Yeah, the rule. Yeah, the floor.
I was wondering, I think it's time that we come back to having meetings in the council chamber. I've watched a lot of other meetings and they've put up the plastic, you know, in front and between the councillors and they're doing business. And they're limiting the number of people that can come in to speak and et cetera. And I think we, I think we really need to get back to having meetings together. So that's what I had in my mind. Thank you.
Is there any other? I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say that, you know, entirely up to the council, not the town manager. Whatever the council wants to do, the town manager will make happen.
Councillor Board lawn?
So does councillor Aubrey have to make a recommendation in writing or how does she move that forward then?
I just, I think we have to decide what we want to do and I think it would be helpful to have it in writing. So if you would like to respond via email, please, that would be, that would be very good and put in writing your sentiments and your concerns and send it to the whole council. Thank you.
One thought I have is right now the executive order ends May twentieth. We don't know what will happen and what what laws might pass to extend some of those orders. Just in case it goes back after.